Welcome, everyone, to tonight's regularly scheduled meeting of the Yountville Town Council. Today is April 3rd, 2012. What I'd like to do to start off with is just welcome our -- the members of our Vietnam Veterans of America Chapter 702 that are here with us this evening. Welcome, and also the rest of the members of the public that are here tonight. If you are interested in any of the informational reports, they are against the wall to your right. With that, I officially call the meeting to order and ask if we can have roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Councilmember Doren Becker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance, and if we could, Alvin Bundy, could you represent the chapter and the rest of us in the pledge?
Negative. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to Item 4, Closed Session Report from March 20. Do we have any reportable action from that meeting?
No.
Thank you. Next up, adoption of tonight's agenda, and I believe we do have one change.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item 9A, Public Hearing Under Chichio's Use Permit, that item has -- the applicant requested this item be withdrawn from the agenda, so there'll be no further discussion on that item.
Thank you. So we will remove Item 9A. Any other questions, corrections, changes? If not, may I have a motion to accept the amended agenda?
Motion to approve amended agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now is public comment, so if anyone from the public would like to speak on anything that's not on tonight's agenda, now would be the time. Anybody moving? So I'll move on then to Item 7, the Consent Calendar. We have two items on that consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, can I muck it up and ask that we pull both items?
Yes, you may. So we'll take Item 7A first. Is there a specific question to the staff report and the recommendation as presented?
I guess my only concern, and it says spring and fall General Assembly, is I will not be in the state for the spring assembly, but I assume the mayor will be there based on discussions, so it's still fine to be -- and then we have the fall. Okay, that's my only question.
We generally just send one voting delegate, so we're getting both of you on there in case one's unable to attend.
Okay.
Is that all of the discussion?
I just won't be able to go to one of them, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
With that discussion, is there any other discussion or motion on that item?
Motion to approve the Consent Calendar.
Well, we're dealing with just 7A at this point, because the vice mayor has asked.
I beg your pardon.
If -- your motion can be for Item 7A specifically?
Okay. I make a move that we approve Item 7A on the Consent Calendar.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, yes. 7B, Vice Mayor?
I would simply ask for a separate vote.
Okay.
Which we will get by default.
Right, yes. So we're going to vote. Any further discussion on 7B before we go ahead and vote on that item? Seeing none, I'll open or accept a motion to accept Item 7B if there is a motion.
I make a motion that we accept and approve the Zoning Ordinance Amendment and adopt Ordinance Number 402-12.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Vice Mayor opposes, and that passes, but thank you for that. Now we will move on to presentations, and tonight it's our distinct pleasure and honor to recognize our local Chapter 702 of the Vietnam Veterans of America and the effort that they've put forth to host the Second Annual, or potentially annual, somewhat annual, Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans of America Day that we enjoyed here in Yountville on Sunday. And what I would like to do now is invite chapter president, Alvin Bundy, and the membership that is here today to stand, and Al, if you will join me at the podium, so I can formally present this proclamation to you in the chapter. This is a proclamation formally recognizing April 1st, 2012, as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. Whereas the Vietnam War was waged for nearly two decades and the United States deployed combat troops in support of the government of South Vietnam, which resulted in 58,220 U.S. military personnel killed, including 32 Napa County residents, and more than 300,000 were wounded. And whereas the country was divided in its support of U.S. involvement in the conflict, causing a mixture of reactions to the return of military personnel from the war. And whereas all of our veterans deserve respect and recognition for their service to our nation in defense of freedom and democracy, and whereas the members of the Napa Valley's Vietnam Veterans of America Chapter 702 has established an official Welcome Home celebration on April 1st, 2012, to honor all Vietnam veterans for their service. And whereas, in the spirit of the Vietnam Veterans Memorials in Washington, D.C. and Sacramento, California, this day of appreciation is a tribute to the sacrifices made by our local veterans who honorably served in Vietnam. It is a time for solemn reflection on the history of this war and today represents our continuing effort to support our veterans and offer a sincere Welcome Home. Now therefore be it resolved, I, John F. Dunbar, Mayor of the town of Yountville, on behalf of the Yountville Town Council, do hereby proclaim April 1st, 2012 as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day in the town of Yountville. I encourage every resident of our community to reflect on this day, to remember all of the veterans of the Vietnam War. We should never forget or fail to recognize the brave, selfless actions of these service men and women who courageously answered the call to duty on behalf of our nation. So, thank you, and formally, Welcome Home.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take a moment just to express our appreciation to the town of Yountville. We're a small group. Our total membership's about 65 members here in the Yountville and Napa area, and for us to put on an event like this, it's a lot of work for us. The town of Yountville was wonderful, and all the efforts they made, just didn't say no, really, to helping us get this done. Also appreciate the fact of seeing so many of you there yesterday, almost all of you, you know, so in support of us. I'd like to say a couple of things. You know, we went past Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans only, because our founding principle, when this organization was first started, is never again will one generation of veterans abandon another. And so we reached out to the Iraq, Afghan vets, OIF, OEF, and also to the Korean War vets, which is another group that didn't get a lot of love when they came home. And yesterday, someone called me late in the day and said that her dad, who just happened to be visiting, from Yuma, Arizona, came, Korean War vet, and when he got home, got back to her house, he called his wife and said, "For the first time ever, I feel like I've been Welcome Home." And y'all also may have seen the article in the newspaper yesterday, where the Iraq vet from Gurnville came over with his dad from Vietnam, Vietnam vet, and what he had to say about how he felt about that reception and Welcome Home he got. So you didn't just get the Vietnam vets, we accomplished our mission. We got the Iraq, Afghan, and Korean. We're not forgetting the other groups, but we just wanted to reach out and make those situations special now. So thanks again so much for your help. We have our chapter meeting tonight, starts in just a few minutes, and we need to go, but thanks again, I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thanks to all of you. And we don't want you to be late for your meeting, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
A reminder that we are going to skip over, we've removed Item 9A from tonight's agenda, so we're going to move right on to Item 10. 10A is a budget workshop, number one. I guess I'm hesitating to want to say that, but staff report will start us off.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight will be a joint presentation between myself and Finance Director Kathleen Bradbury. As is our tradition this time of year, we start with a broader workshop, talking generally about what we know going into the budget development, where our revenue trends are, where we anticipate finishing the year, as well as identifying themes, so that as we go into the more involved workshops that occur in May and June, they build upon what we talk about tonight. So we also will spend some time talking about budget parameters and assumptions, and the reason that they're outlined in detail for you is that that will be the direction to staff, if you will, about how we build the budget. And for many of you, this is now becoming a little more familiar and a little more comfortable, but we want to check in. We're going to share with you some, I hate to use the word "good news," because I really don't know that it's good news from that perspective, but the news for us is that the, this year, from the state level, we're not going to be as challenged. A lot of other communities are that had redevelopment agencies, but the current initiatives at the state level are not really putting us in play. The COPS grant funding appears secured, there aren't as many other efforts. In previous years, you've heard me talk about uncertainty and certain levels of funding and structure. Some of that's gone away completely, and we don't have to worry about its uncertainty anymore, it's just gone. Other programs that we build our budget on, so from that standpoint, it's not as questioning. There was a year when we built a budget and had to change it several times, so that's kind of a good thing. This is our second year that we're integrating the council's five-year strategic objectives, planning goals for 2011 to 16 into our budgeting process, and we'll continue to monitor those, but those become a watchstone, if you will, of how we build the budget, and that's what we build our work plan and activity. So with that, again, we're very pleased, and our goal is to present, and we want to continue to present, a balanced budget. So that's our number-one objective in terms of how we build this. Based on some previous council direction, staff will be, I'm not going to use the word "aggressive," but we are going to be introducing three-year trending as a mechanism for us to review, and there are a few areas where, especially now that you've provided some support with the Revenue Stabilization Fund, we are going to be able to be a little more, I think, realistic with where we see TOT trending. I do continue to be very conservative, because many of our neighboring jurisdictions have a diversity of revenue streams, the town of Yountville does not. Our revenue is, 75% of our revenue is derived from two sources, and that's TOT and sales tax principally paid. So I will always tend to be a bit conservative in our projections, but we are going to try to be realistic in terms of where that's going. Again, our theme will continue to be maintenance of our current service levels and efforts that way, no new services or expansion of services without an identified revenue stream. So with that, to start off, what should be a little better, some of the good news, I'll turn it over to Kathleen, and she's going to talk about what are some of the numbers at which we are going to start with building the budget on.
Thank you, Steve. So I'm just going to walk through some of the highlights of what we're projecting, first in our revenue area. As Steve said, TOT is our big focus, and we're currently projecting for next year 4.8 million, and we feel that is still a fairly conservative estimate, given our current trend. I just sent out the latest report today, and we're real happy with that trend. We don't see any reason it won't continue, but we still want to be somewhat conservative with our projection. So for the current year, as you may remember, at mid-year, we adjusted our estimate to 4.65 million, and we're definitely tracking to probably exceed that this year. So the positive trend is continuing with the new rooms added at Hotel Yountville, and just all of our properties performing very well, and month by month exceeding last year's actual revenue. So we're going to stay on top of that, monitor it, we do very closely, and we start some additional charts, and I know Councilmember Hall was wishing I had a PowerPoint tonight, but that will come at the next budget workshop, that'll show some of those trends more clearly. So right now, we've plugged in 4.8 million. For sales tax, our projections based on some estimates that we get and models that we receive from Muni Services, they get all the raw data from the State Board of Equalization, and they meet with us on a quarterly basis and show us how things are tracking and what they anticipate, and their estimates have been very good for us to follow, and we're currently plugged in for next year's sales tax at 915,000, and that's a combination of the 900,000 undesignated sales tax and 15,000 that's earmarked for public safety. Our current year budget was adjusted up to 895,000, and we're expecting to reach that target this year. Actual revenue for last fiscal year, 10-11, was 840,000, so you can see we have made a big jump in our sales tax revenue. Again, with these big revenue sources, we're seeing that we're starting to reach a plateau, and we know that going forward, we can't continually rely on these large increases. With property tax, we're budgeting basically flat from last year. We are estimating 925,000 total property tax, which is net of a collection fee, and that's pretty flat. This year, what we've estimated is 923,200. In 2010-11, we did have a higher actual amount, we received over $1 million in property tax, but that included some catch-up payments from prior year on the excess E-RAF, and it's been our policy not to budget for that excess E-RAF. It's a lot of different calculations that go into it, it's subject to state approval, and even if we do continue to get it every year, it won't be a large amount as we received two years ago. So absent any other information, which we will get some more current information probably by the end of April, but we feel pretty confident with our $925,000 number, we feel that's still fairly conservative. So those are the major revenues. We also have built in the assumption that we will receive our $100,000 state COPS grant, and I'm sure you all remember that that's been in play in Sacramento, there's been some different funding sources, and right now, the word on the street is that it is included in the governor's proposed budget, and short of anything that the legislature would do to change that, that we should presume that we will receive our $100,000. Of course, we'll keep monitoring that. If we think that's going to change, you know, we reserve the right to bring back more information as we go through our budget workshops. But right now, we feel that there's a good chance that we will get our $100,000 in 2012-15. One of the trade-offs that the governor's budget included was that vehicle license fees that go to cities would be basically zeroed out. And for our town, I mean, it's never a good thing to lose revenue, but it means the loss of about $15,000 a year. For a lot of cities, which isn't a bad trade to get 100, for a lot of cities, it puts them in a really bad position. They're giving up a lot of revenue to get very little in trade, so that's all being disputed, I'm sure, by those larger cities, but for us, we'd rather get the $100,000, so. But we will be monitoring that as we go through the budget process, and we'll keep the council apprised of any changes or information that we get that would change that estimate. So that's kind of it on the revenue side, for major revenues. We're also looking at our key increased expenditures, and while some of these aren't large increases, they're items that we really don't have a lot of control over, and they're costs that we know are going up, and we have the town share of the Napa County Animal Control Shelter, and that's going up to 13,400, and that's part of our agreement, where the county is phasing in this cost increase until they get us to a full share of our cost. So we'll plug that in for the budget for next year. We have our City of Napa Housing Authority contract, which thankfully, we're not estimating an increase, and I believe the planning director has negotiated with the housing authority to keep that amount flat for the next two years, so that's good news for the town, to continue the service for our affordable housing program. Our contract costs for fire and emergency medical services, the town manager can probably speak to this in a little more detail, but he is in negotiations with the Napa County to extend our contract for, I believe, two more years, and we're estimating currently a 5% increase, which would bring that contract up to about $540,000, and then stay flat for the second year. So we've plugged that in as a budget estimate. Our contract for law enforcement, which was renewed last year, has an increase of 3%, and it'll be increasing up to 859,000 for 2012-2013. For PERS retirement, for our full-time employees, our employer rates are going up slightly, as you can see from the chart, and in the future, we had some additional projections on here initially, but PERS has increased their discount rate, and I believe that will affect our employee rates in 2013-14. So we'll keep our ears open and eyes open for that, and what that might be in the long term for cost increases for PERS. And we're still maintaining our two-tiered PERS, and you can see the reduction in cost for new employees. It's a much lower percentage for the second-tiered benefit. The employee bargaining units are still in discussion with the town manager, and we're hoping to get that finalized. We've built the budget, assuming no COLA for next year. On risk management, we know we have some cost increases coming forward, and we've used some initial projections to move forward on the budget. We do know that workers' comp is going to be experiencing an increase, and that our liability coverage is going to increase. Don't have the exact amounts yet, but we've plugged in what we project to be an increase for those, and we're waiting to hear how that all finalizes and plays out, and again, the town manager has more specifics on that, as he is serving on the board, and they're going through the discussions and the details of those programs. The town has also projected a 10% increase on property insurance coverage. So we're working from those projections. We have, we did use a $5,000 of our liability reserve to pay for the deductible for the water damage at, for the pipe failure at the community center, so we'll be wanting to replenish that and keep our reserves at $40,000 moving forward. So you'll see that when we build the budget and bring that forward. So that's kind of the highlights of our key expenditure assumptions. And then just moving forward with our general budget parameters and key assumptions, we're building the budget to continue to maintain our existing core areas of service, and we're not looking at any new initiatives or programs unless they're accompanied with an identified funding source. We're continuing to focus and improve on our cost recovery targets, and one of the things we'll be bringing back to you in May is our master fee schedule for a review, and we'll be applying a CPI to some of those charges and re-adopting that, because that's now how we track all of our fees. We're going to balance our budget with expenditures and within available revenue. We want to continue to include an annual budget contingency, the estimated range of 100 to $200,000, depending what the council's prerogative is with that. And just to explain, those are funds that are set aside in a reserve and won't be spent or allocated without the council's approval. We've implemented the 8% OPEB rate, and that's per the council policy, so we'll be phasing in our new policy of 8% for '12-13, and then 9% and 10% with the two years going forward. And then additionally, council can transfer and allocate additional funds to the OPEB trust when funds are available, that will always be an option to you. We're continuing our second level of PERS retirement, the two-tiered program, as I referred to earlier, and we're continuing implementation of our five-year water and wastewater rate schedules, and we're hoping those funds can become self-sustainable. And that kind of summarizes key revenues, expenditures, and budget assumptions, and I think I'd like to turn it back, unless you have questions of me at this time, turn it back to the town manager.
I'll check on any questions so far. I know Councilmember Hall has been frantically typing away in his calculator as well.
Hi, thanks Kathleen for the summary, and it's helpful, looking back, at least, you know, in general, at the big buckets of what move around in our town's revenue, and that's important. I did have one, you know, you made a comment about the COPS grant, I think last year, we, you know, we had left it out, and then when we, once we received or thought we were going to receive it, and I know you said that, based on the current governor's budget, that it's in there, I would just, you know, put the placeholder out there that it's $100,000, if we don't earmark it, then we don't spend it, and if it comes in, then it's gravy, that might be a thought. You go from 6.7 down to 6.4, or 6.6 in revenue projected based on these larger buckets.
Right.
The other thing that's not mentioned in here that I think was of particular interest this year, and I think it came up a couple of times, was the discussion around Parks and Rec, and I know that's not in here, so I won't, we won't go into that in detail, but we should just be, we should evaluate and look at where we're at and roll forward from that.
Right.
Comment on that, Steve?
Actually, I will, thank you. That will be coming up as part of our departmental review, so we will reevaluate as they move forward in a broader theme, what our cost recovery targets are in those areas and what their revenue is. So you will see that, and those will look a lot closer to what we did with the mid-year adjustments.
Right.
They are in the process of doing some research with a few of the programs to see where user interest is, but part of that, for my purposes, when we talk about cost recovery targets, we put all of that kind of in one theme, but it will be something that Samantha and her team will spend more time on and be vetted, but like I say, the projections and base will look very similar from what we did with our mid-year adjustment at the starting point.
Okay. Just a couple more, Mayor. One thing that I put a question mark on, and that's the last bullet point here under Budget Parameters and Key Assumptions, and that's the Prop 22. What specifically could the state say, "You guys are on the hook for," and you could be, in principle, paying for, that they're currently paying for, outside of the COPS grant, which I think is an obvious one?
There are a few little miscellaneous things, but Prop 22 basically created a prohibition against them moving funding that went in. The state's notorious for not fully funding state-mandated costs and then using certain things. We're weaning ourselves and getting further and further, but some of that is also highway user gas tax and some other state subventions. And it also gets into, the biggest thing it protects, in all honesty, is sales tax that's dedicated to local government and our allocation of property tax. Many of you have heard us talk about things, and the public glazes over for good reason when we talk about the triple flip, VLF, and we get this portion of this back, and it's that type of stuff that really has, I think, lent to a loss of credibility and transparency, because, you know, we used to be able to say, "Property tax went for this purpose," and now we say, you know, "Only so much goes, and it's capped." You know, we get 1% of the sales tax, the sales tax rate is anywhere from 7 and 3/4 to 9 and 1/2, there are local add-ons, so there could be some options there. So those are the types of things that it really clarifies, and if there were specific historical And if there were specific historical areas that the state had to continue funding and pass through, for example, the reason we even get into vehicle registration fees as an example was, vehicle registration fees used to be actually a property tax on the car. And that's how it was coming back to local government. So that's what Prop 22 was meant to secure so that things, you know, I worry about, and unfortunately, it's not a big risk, but, you know, for us, if the state decided that they wanted a share of, we'll say, TOT. Now, I don't think they have a good premise because they don't have a connection to it like they do with some of the others, but, you know, those are the types of things that we were hopeful that Prop 22 as a blatant, you know, what's yours is yours and stay away from what's the local. So, you know, we're, we don't use some of the other funding structures. There are also some formulas based on population for site and services that, but, you know, Kathleen mentioned one, the VLF at this point in time. The unique demographics of our community do not generate much registration, in part because, you know, 1,000 of our population, for the most part, probably has, 10% of those may have a vehicle. So we're skewed. So in this particular case, when there's a per capita distribution, or in our case like that, the 100,000, you know, we'll take 100,000 over 15 any day, but in a more normal distribution, that would not be an equitable balance. So, long answer, and I apologize, but those are just some of the things out there that Prop 22 and its simplification was basically to try to clarify, state needs to live within its means and not, not use or increase unfunded mandates to local government.
And then I'll just make one last comment, although maybe it's more of a question. And I see that, you know, you put forward this paperless agenda item, Town Council.
Actually, we haven't finished our presentation.
I just have a question, or a question about that, if you will, because I fortunately have read through it. And that is that if there are these kinds of things we're looking at, payback on these kinds of things as we go through the budget process would be great. And I think everyone here would benefit from that sort of analysis, your cost benefit, and then the payback of such an activity, because you say, we might reduce costs on paper, great, but there's other costs that are in. Just that kind of follow-on would be my, my other question is, if we could make sure that those kinds of analyses are done, that would be great.
So to your point, if we allocate $5,000 to go paperless and it's going to save us $15,000, that helps the decision.
Precisely.
And we will, when departments make their budget presentations, that will be part of it.
Any other questions to, just to this part of the report? Yeah, Councilmember Mueller?
One of my hot-button topics, the County of Napa Animal Control Shelter. This is a phase until we get to full cost. So what will eventually the full cost be? And how long does the contract last?
We're currently in a five-year agreement, and this will be going into year three of that. We will be approaching mid-20s, and I don't, I'll give you the exact number, I don't have it in front of me. There is great discussion amongst the managers and the county. We're not really happy with this structure. We're not really happy with the cost allocation and the lack of involvement with managing and making budget decisions. So unfortunately, I don't have a good alternative to that agreement right now, but that is something that we continue to work on, and I do understand that the council has sensitivity to that.
Well, so just fundamentally, for my edification and maybe others as well, this is something that's fairly new. Before this, we never really had an animal control shelter. And we generate sales tax, property tax, it goes to the state, part goes to the county, then comes to us. Is this not a county activity? And how is it that they can charge us back for this, but they don't charge back for other items? How does that work?
Well, what I would say, the county in its cost recovery with various stages over the last 10 years especially, where the state's allowed, there are certain things now that they're saying, we're doing, we don't have to do, and therefore, if we don't do it. So they're getting more aggressive at cost recovery, and there are certain services that they are allowed by state to charge back. Many counties operated a range of services and provided things like the animal shelter as part of a county cost structure. So frankly, a lot of this is the same type of analysis we're having to do when we look at who's, who's ultimately generating the service and therefore, who are the potential targets for cost recovery. This current model is actually premised on percent of population. Some of our county services like this are also skewed in some parts because the counties are restructuring a lot of their service delivery. And Napa County is a unique one in the sense that most of our population is in the urban areas. So when the county has a discretionary service like this, and, you know, the state also regulates, you know, you have to keep a dog or a cat for so many days before you can, you know, consider euthanasia and all the other various things. So some of those costs get very expensive. But, so they're seeing this as an opportunity for cost recovery because when the county identifies their population base, and you saw it earlier in the handout from the Library Services Director, they're only about 26% of the population. So this is a way for them to shift 75% of their cost from an operation that they were funding to somebody else. So I have, I continue to expect to see the county making efforts to try to do that. I don't see that going away. I think, you know, we're going to have to, to be aware where there's other areas. That's also why, you know, but that's just a trend. Now collectively, several cities are looking at what are some other service delivery options, and, you know, can we privatize that? The county's been very receptive to any of the other alternatives other than simply telling us what our share of the cost is. But that dialogue's going on.
If there are specific questions still, or if we can get through the entire presentation and then have questions?
If I could just make a comment, Councilmember Hall mentioned about the COPS grant, and, you know, if we plug it in for budget, we don't spend it. I just want to clarify that those funds are used for what we consider supplemental law enforcement services, because that's what we have to use it for, but it's part of our sheriff's contract. So we're going to pay the sheriffs whether we get the $100,000 or not. So as we get closer to adopting the budget, if that's, you know, if we really think that's in play, then we'll have to look at, you know, do we want to have some contingency for if we don't get the funding?
And you also have to pass a resolution identifying that it is actually being used for appropriate law enforcement services in order to be eligible for the grant.
So are there any additional questions, Councilmember Mueller? Do you have additional questions on the first part of the presentation?
Yeah, yeah, one quick one. I note that for point clarification, there's a 5% increase to the fire medical services, but then it says remains flat for year two. So 5% this year, 0% is flat.
That's what I'm currently in negotiations, and that's what our tentative, we've still got some final, but that's what we're trying to project.
Instead of two and a half and two and a half, just to make our budget easier?
Well, the challenge, it doesn't necessarily make their budget easier, so they've got some staffing costs that are driving that.
Okay.
Any other questions to the report so far? Okay, let's continue.
All right. The last part is, there's a handful of initiatives that are out there that will be shaped in the budget and coming back to you. So we'll jump right up on one of those, which is evaluation of the paperless agenda. This is a follow-through item that the council's asked us to do a little homework on. And some of these, we will look at return on investment where we can. Some of these are, you know, a little more challenging because we don't have a large analytical department, so we want to make sure we do it. But we do have some metrics. We're excited about where paperless agenda can go. Not only is it potentially paper reduction, it also could allow us to reallocate some staff resources differently because we spend, depending on what level of paperless agenda in the organization we do, and that's the other thing I want to point out, you guys aren't the only agenda we do. We have a fairly involved process for the ZDRB and lesser agendas for the Parks and Community Services Commission. But depending on the model, especially for council and ZDRB, there is a significant amount of staff time into the duplication and production and distribution of the packets. So there's potentially two positive things that will be of benefit. A second area that we're really looking at and want probably to accelerate will be our electronics records management. We are final, we are in the final stages of our evaluation, and currently, things are looking good, although we're not quite completed. But we're generally pleased with where things are going, and based on that, if things are favorable, we may want to look at accelerating our ability to get the records in so that we have that. So we will have a more detailed report to you shortly on that, but that's something, and that's currently in our budget, but we may look at accelerating it. Another area of concern is that we've come to the recent realization that our facility's security structures are not. And we're not close to acceptable industry standards. So we will probably start at the corporation yard first and address some security camera. We have nothing. So it's not really a very appropriate way, given, given what we have, but the second area-
Yeah, let's just gloss over that paragraph. I think we got the message.
And then the second area will be looking at improvements at Town Hall, but they will probably be incorporated into our seismic retrofit upgrade. So we'll try to approach those between those two. Another item under consideration is the possible Yountville Shuttle service expansion. As you all know, presently, the shuttle operates five days a week, but is dark Monday and Tuesday. We will also be talking to the Yountville T-Bid to see if they might be interesting. Currently, NCTPA is estimated in the low $50,000 cost would be what it would take for us to support service on Monday and Tuesday. So we will have a little dialogue, and we're going to ask you if that's something you want us to potentially look at as well. Another item is the potential for Community Cleanup, Community Cleanup Day funding. Council will be asked to provide some resolution on that going forward because we've only made a funding decision for the current program that'll launch this spring. And another small one-time item that's been working its way through is that Wayfinding signage program, and there may be, council may have an appropriate expenditure of between $5,000 to $10,000 to help initially launch that program and then set the structure that will be the balance on a subscription basis. So those are just some things that we see out there, and if there's some other initiatives that the council would like us to evaluate and try to have some price information on, please provide that or share. But those are some that we have pulled out based on previous feedback from the council.
If I could just really quickly make a comment, Vice Mayor and I, as board members of the NCTPA, have heard reports both on the Clipper Card expansion throughout the system in Napa County, coming up maybe in the near to medium, near term. Also, new fare boxes that would be more efficient and more accurate. Those things may just impact that $50,000 cost number that they're throwing out there, but it also may not be this budget cycle. So just, just that.
One clarification for you, our current council policy on fare box is, you know, we pay the fare box, there's no charge, so fare box efficiency will only result in nothing. I mean, I'm just, so we know when we talk about that because we don't charge, our current rate structure is free.
But I'm really talking, if we're hearing from the county about what their average costs are for running their vehicles, it might impact it, it might not.
It does, and there is a base allocation, and that's why I'm saying this is where they're at. Now-
The Vice Mayor, I think, wanted to-
So just to clarify, on the Yountville trolley, you were talking about $50,000 is the change from the current 30 is the estimation? That I think a man may have misunderstood.
No, an increase, an increase, let me, no, let me try. It's an increase of $50,000 above our current 30 because the scalability of the program, we've maximized our current hours, so not all hours cost the same, and you've heard that story before.
Yes.
But we use our base hours, so, but for us to replicate what the balance of our operating schedule on Monday and Tuesday, where we're presently dark, has been estimated about $52,000.
So, so funds that, you know, most of the funds that come in are state and federal funds for transit, those, I assume, don't really come into play very much there?
Actually, that's net of that. In other words, the NCTPA will be allocating substantial in the neighborhood of $80,000 to $100,000 to cover that, and the $50,000 is what we need to come up to bring that to a whole. So that's why I'm saying, it's up for discussion. We're also going to be discussing it at the T-Bid. Up in Calistoga, the, they have chosen, and, you know, great form of flattery, is they're actually taking their system and modeling it off the success of ours with two nuances. One, they actually do charge a fare box. Residents have a cost plus what the town, the city up there subsidizes, and then their local T-Bid is paying it, and they will give, the hotel guests will have a token to use instead of having to pay the dollar that residents. So there are some discussions and, but, you know, so I don't, you know, you may say, no, this is not the right time, but we felt we needed, based on previous conversation, to at least provide some basic information about what that cost and that option would be.
Try not to interrupt you until you get through your whole report.
No, it's, we understand, and actually, as long as you all are comfortable, we'd rather, and now we're going to move to a little bit of the capital program budget, and the good news is I'm not going to talk a whole lot about this because you've seen a more recent detailed provision. But as you all know, when we get to this time of the budget year, we have the current year, which becomes our annual operating budget, so those become the things that we're actually doing, or what we often refer to as Year One. So that gets adopted as part of our annual budget. And then we will introduce the CIP, which is Year One, which you've already seen through Five. So, and that's a rolling five we're always bringing. But, you know, so our conversation tonight's going to focus a little bit on what we see as the significant programs moving forward this year, some of what's not. And again, there's a lot of information there. Most, as you know, we've been doing a lot of discussion on the CIP, and we've done a lot of extensive work, so we're not going to go into that. Key themes the public needs to understand is, the town has over $20 million of unmet infrastructure need comprising of things from the seismic retrofit, utility undergrounding, maintaining our streets at the condition to get to a PMI or a Pavement Management Index quality of 75, water utility lines, sewer lines. So when we talk about the capital improvements project, very significant, and also investment in our infrastructure has life cycles. So, you know, some of our infrastructure in this community dates back to the 1950s, even though we were not incorporated until 1965. But the town inherited and took on all of the liabilities and operations of the predecessor Water and Wastewater Utility District. So we do have some old infrastructure, bridges and things like that, that are reaching useful life. So part of the CIP process is to prepare that. So what we do anticipate, based on prior council feedback seen in this year's budget, is a continuation of Hopper Creek Flood Mitigation Projects. The good news is those are paid for by the balance of our remaining allocation of Measure A. We anticipate having the final design and planning for the seismic retrofit of this building and a number so that hopefully next year, we will be able to secure debt financing to move forward with this seismic retrofit. We will start the design of the Madison and Yount Street Sewer Lateral. And again, that'll be a two-year program, so we'll do the design this year and then the construction next year. And as you might recall, when you're doing Madison and Yount, when you're doing sewer and water lines, you ultimately will repave the road. Limited street paving, you well know that we're knee-deep into our recycled water project, so that will continue. Completion of the North Yountville Bike Path will go from design to construction. That's principally grant-funded. Our methane gas capture project will probably carry over into the next fiscal year. That's an ESCO project funded from energy savings, and we're hoping to move forward with the renovation of our park restrooms. So those are what we anticipate bringing forward and funding this year. Here are some things that are still not quite ready for funding. Our general plan update process. We are still phasing water line replacement projects. There'll be more that need to be done, but they need to be done once the water fund has adequate fund balance. Town street light replacement program as we move into the residential areas. Additional utility undergrounding. The utility undergrounding fund is zeroed out at this point, so our approach right now will be to work on and support where we have private development funded, and then we will make policy decisions based on opportunities, whether there's any interest in the council providing financial support to extend adjacent to where that private developer is going. But we won't necessarily be taking the lead on any project at this point in time until we develop more fund balance. And then we are also hoping to move forward with- And then, we are also hoping to move forward with South Washington parking lot and working on some potentials there. So, we're going to, at the staff level, do some design work to have some concepts ready to look at what it would take perhaps to redevelop that empty dirt lot into a meaningful parking. The same concept to the empty lot adjacent to Hopper Creek at Oak Circle. Is there a way for us to make that a safer area where a lot of people are already parking and it narrows? Could we do some configuration and reorient? And that's also where our footbridge crossing will go. So, these are some things that we're going to put into the design, so that hopefully we'll be prepared if a funding source comes forward to move forward. As I mentioned, you know, our five-year unfunded need is sixteen point five-three million. The good news is we're making significant inroads on ability to do that. So, that's sort of the Reader's Digest nutshell of where and how and some of the elements that staff's working on for this year's budget, and we'd appreciate your feedback and thoughts.
Counselor Dornbecker?
Did you purposely skip or just miss the solar feasibility?
I just read over it, I'm sorry. The solar feasibility is also one that's not moving too quickly. And there's a, there is one glimmer of hope. We are encouraged by hearing from Senator Wolk that she's willing to work and support an aggregation measure, because frankly, without that, it makes it very challenging for the town to spend money on solar, because for us to benefit, you know, we have, our uses are distributed throughout the community on many meters rather than one. But, we do know that staff is prepared and would like to move forward with more solar.
Thank you.
Any other questions specifically before we invite the public to comment? Counselor Mueller?
I'm still looking for a little more clarification on the CIP budget. I see all the numbers here. So, the total five-year unfunded need is sixteen-plus million, but yet, you say that town's making significant inroads. But, I'm reading this right, we have well less eight-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand in the bank to cover sixteen million-plus. So, it's a pretty big disconnect, right?
Oh, we still have a big disconnect, don't get me wrong.
Okay.
You know, a big chunk of that is utility undergrounding, which, you know, is a nice thing to do versus a must-do. Streets, you know, when I say we're making inroads, I don't want to give the impression that we're there, because we're not. We have, in fact, I maybe, what I would say is, we've been discussing alternatives, things like the highway, the measure, the sales tax extension, you know, you guys have made clear direction that you would like the town to increase our transfer into the Capital Projects Fund. So, those are the types of things when I say we're making some inroads. But, no, we don't, we don't have enough money to do all of the things that you currently have said you would like us to do in the next five years. And that's also, when I say inroads, our approval of the new rate structure over five years will allow the Water and Wastewater Utility Fund. So, it's a combination of those things, but there are significant big-ticket items that simply aren't going anywhere until we come up with a funding source or a grant or a unique opportunity.
I also wanted to add on that, the eight-hundred thousand is just the general fund, so there is funding in the rates, you know, built in the water and sewer rates, there's also grants, so there are, there are other funding sources above and beyond the eight-hundred thousand. So, the sixteen is the total, and then, there are other revenue sources.
Which, that also explains why certain projects go forward, and that at times is hard for the public to understand. For example, they'll ask you, why are you doing a flood mitigation measure when I think this is so much more important? And the answer is, we have Measure A funding that was allocated and approved to do that, or we have a grant to build the bike path. So, you know, those are, you'll note in that initial, you know, the general fund has a limited number of projects that it's actually directly going to be funding.
Counselor Mueller, any other questions at this time?
No.
Counselor Hall, questions?
No.
Vice Mayor, questions? No? I'll invite members of the public to offer their comments or questions at this time, if you'd like. Seeing no questions moving forward, we'll continue on with the discussion at council level. General comments for direction to staff. Are we satisfied that this is an appropriate interpretation of council direction at this point? Are there specific things that you all would like to highlight as either inappropriate or appropriate? Counselor Hall, it's, we'll deal with you.
Yeah, I mean, I think in general, it's directionally correct. It's kind of where we left off this last year at the budgeting process, and I think we're, we're taking conservative approach or continue to take a conservative approach. Obviously, we've built some reserves, and to the extent we need to utilize those going forward, but I would caution us not to use that to build out a structurally unbalanced budget. I think, again, the basis for any good government is to have a balance, and it needs to be structurally balanced, the income and the expense, recognizing there are going to be larger projects, and I think that those, we're going to have to find the funding sources for to the extent possible. I did just want to, you know, comment that at the end of the report, you talk about, what are those things that we are willing to defer or would be interested in deferring? And obviously, it's hard to say if there is any of those things, this juncture, till we have a final number, but we all need to be prepared that if we can't find the ability to balance with our undiversified, as Steve might put it, revenue sources, because they are limited in nature and the fact that we are built out in this community from our biggest revenue source, you know, we just, we need to be prepared that those may be difficult discussions that we would have. But I don't think that we're in a situation where we're going to have to reduce the existing number of services. It may just be that we have to really go back and evaluate what kind of infrastructure, how do we want to maintain it, and what are, you know, what are the other things that we'd like to do versus necessarily need to do? And I think that, Steve, that, you know, as long as we follow that sort of approach with our budget in the town, you know, the residents are being very well-served by not just the staff, but hopefully by us taking fiduciary responsibility that we're going to have a structurally balanced budget. And that's, that's what we should all expect. So, I mean, I think that we're on the path to that, and I just encourage us to, you know, make, hey, we only have, what, two more months, three more months before you got to be done?
Yes.
Plenty of time.
And at our next budget workshop, which is May first, I believe, we hope to have that general fund summary, so that we can kind of gauge where we're at, how much money we might have to transfer to Capital Projects Fund, and what our overall looks like.
That's very much what the process was last year.
Yes.
We did that very thing.
Yes, so we're following that same-
We identified certain funding concerns, put them in, on hold basically-
Right.
-until the money actually came in, made itself available, and then we reallocated that money.
So, it'll be, it'll be a little more concrete at that point.
Great.
Counselor Mueller?
I'll just kind of go through with my general comments here. The first one, in terms of cost recovery regarding the swimming pool. I'm not a, Napa residents use the pool, Napa County residents use the pool, maybe they'll just tell us no, but why don't we just ask the city, ask the county, you know, for some funding? You know, since those residents use our pool, maybe we can do some negotiation. We charge those out-of-town people a little bit more, but maybe we could get some funding that would help. I don't know if we, if our lease with the Veterans Home would preclude that or not, so, I'm, the county seems to be willing to ask us for funds, so I'm not afraid to ask them for some funds. In terms of the paperless agenda, I think that's a great idea, but I think we also might want to factor in some additional IT cost support. You know, these things just really aren't seamless, from what I understand. I mean, you can certainly get some stuff on your iPad, but I have a feeling that, you know, we might need a little extra support. I don't know if our current IT person is even an expert at that, so I'd suggest maybe just look at that a little bit. An extra fifty thousand dollars for the Yountville shuttle. Boy, you know, those additional hours, I think it's similar to the same library discussion we had. I don't know, doubt if we can get volunteers to drive the shuttle around, but, you know, that's pretty high in my book, so I would say that that's going to be a low priority for me. I'm fine. Well, I don't know, asking, you know, for T-Bid money, could that money be really used better for something else rather than the shuttle? So, I wouldn't go to that necessarily, you know, if we could be using the money for something else. I think, you know, anything that we can be doing to support our TOT has got to be our most critical thing that we really look at. It's always, you know, what services do we want to cut, this or that? But, to me, I think we really need a strategic focus on maintaining or increasing that, the TOT. It's just so critically important to us that, you know, that's really our golden egg, and any fluff and any protection that we can give to that, you know, what else can we really be doing? Are there other things that we can be doing in that regard? I think should be something I'd certainly like to talk about. CIP is probably, well, the sacred cow is fireworks, that's my sacred cow, so. And then, the capital improvement project. So, what I did, I just kind of looked at the, and I'm assuming, you know, we might go out and ask for Napa County taxes for the street, but much like the COPS grant, I'm going to, hey, if it materializes, great, but I'm going to make the assumption it's not there until it comes in. So, so what I kind of looked at was just the Capital Projects Fund with needs over five years, ten point six million, street fund, two point six million. If you add that together, that's thirteen point two million divided by over five years. I mean, we need two point six-four million dollars annually just for those two buckets. I do understand the wastewater and the water funds are enterprise funds, so we are, we do have a mechanism for those. And Measure A hopefully will take care of the, and I don't even know, is there enough Measure A money to take care of the seven hundred thousand we're looking for for drainage and flood control?
Almost, it's pretty close.
Okay.
We're like two million versus two point seven.
So, that's what I'm looking at, is, you know, the thirteen point two just from the top two budget, the Capital Project Fund and the Street Fund. I mean, with, if it's two point six-four million annually, just with what we'd like to do, we only have eight-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. That's a pretty big discrepancy. I mean, how are we really going to get there? I'm just not comfortable just throwing in extra money. I mean, even if we just throw in, or have to throw in a million dollars a year for that, that's only about thirty or forty percent of what we need. So, this is what troubles me the most, how we're really going to, you know, to get there, because I think it's critically important. It shows our taxpayers that we're really spending money on something, you know, that's our vital services in addition to police and fire, but I think it's also important to invest in our TOT. It really creates the infrastructure that makes this town someplace that people do want to come to and stay in our hotels and eat in our restaurants. So, I think we're really, again, kind of protecting that golden egg of the TOT by really focusing on some of these capital improvement projects. That's my comments.
I would just comment about the fact that the ten point six million dollars are not all critical need urgent projects. Those, that's a wish list of a perfect case scenario, really. So, they're not critical infrastructure necessarily, they're desired. You know, so, I think we've done a good job of evaluating core services versus desired services, and we've been able to protect our core services very well, and then we've had to, you know, do some negotiation about some of those desired projects and services, so, but thank you for that. Counselor Dornbecker?
Well, I too am concerned about the, you know, the cost of adding two days a week for the Yountville shuttle, but I know that there are many members of the Veterans Home that do use the shuttle to come into town. You know, I realize that we're just really starting to get into, I mean, I like to see the bones, and I think there's a really good structure. I'm not really concerned about, you know, the capital improvement program, because I do agree with the mayor that some of the things on that list absolutely need to be done on, you know, and some of them can be, you know, put on a slower pace. So, and I, you know, I really don't have any, if I had a sacred cow, it would probably be, I think it's a really great thing to have a trash cleanup day. So, I'll, I'll match your fireworks with cleaning up the town, I think that's a good thing, too. But, you know, this is just the beginning of the conversation, and as we go along, I'm sure we'll be able to identify other things, other ways of either saving money or hopefully other grants available. I know that you're working very hard, you're always working very hard to look for revenue, and I appreciate that. So, right now, I'm keeping an open mind.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. First of all, I will start off on the revenue projection side. I think it's, continues to be conservative, maybe not ultra-conservative, but these numbers make sense to me, knowing past history and where we've ended up so far this year. So, I think they're responsible numbers, and I agree, the COPS thing is just something that we have to watch. I, it's, the fact it has survived the last couple go-arounds, and the fact it's in the governor's budget makes me think that it's reasonable to at least put it in there, and we should think about what is that offsetting through the process if that does disappear. I, I've kind of looked at this whole budget process from the revenue side, and I, I mean, I think we have to really recognize that how many jurisdictions can say that their primary revenue source is up eighteen point eight percent over two years? I mean, it's, we're talking about TOT from two thousand ten, eleven to the projection for next year, is just truly unbelievable. I mean, we're very, very, very fortunate to be in that situation. And as we've talked about, and we've talked about it for years, you know, we always kind of use, as the town has approached build-out, we're, I thought we'd probably be here a little faster, but we're really getting there now. And obviously, there's construction finally up at R and D Kitchen, but that's going to have mostly sales tax impact, and the TOT, there's nothing on the horizon except for growth that's going to increase that. There are no new hotel rooms that will happen for years, and maybe ever. So, we have seen that large jump, partially because room rates are up and partially because the Hotel Yountville had an extremely successful conversion in addition of rooms, and the Bar de Sono is now up and going, and North Block Hotel, sorry for the pause there, is up and going. So, I think we really need to, from my perspective, I look at that about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar increase and say, we are fortunate to have it, how can we use that to plan for the future? And I look at three things. Our capital budget in general, or CIP program, we've talked about this sixteen point three million dollar deficit. I agree with the mayor and Counselor Dornbecker. That's, to me, that's not a real number that says here unfunded need, that is mostly want. And, you know, I've had some people ask me, so, what's the plan for utility undergrounding? My answer is simple, there isn't a plan. There's no funding mechanism in place for something of that substantial size that I feel like I could ever justify doing. So, I do think that we need to kind of break that down into the need versus want category. We've done that in our prioritization, but I think for future, when we get into the real discussion, we can have that discussion better. And I do look at, within cap, the capital expenditure side, roads are something, and basic infrastructure we need to maintain, we need to maintain what we have, and I think that is what we really need to focus on, how do we have funds that we can maintain what we have? I look at the increases in the costs that we have that are just natural. We're going to have increases in costs in employees of some amount. I was personally glad that CalPERS changed their rate, because it needs to happen sometimes, and it needs to happen more, but that's going to increase our costs, it's just a reality. And we have an opportunity, in my opinion, to kind of up the ante a bit on our, or a lot, on our OPEB reserves, and I, you know, I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but I certainly don't think that the current policy is adequate. And I'll say that again, sorry. Let's see. On the potential project expenditures, I agree with the paperless agenda for town. I kind of went through this list and added up how much it was, it was about a hundred and forty thousand dollars of items, but there were, these are non-recurring items in general.
With the exception of the shuttle.
That's right. But- But that would be an ongoing item. Some of these already have budget items for this year, like the paperless records management, so the increase for next year wouldn't be as high, and it would go away except for the ongoing maintenance. So I think the paperless, you know, going to tablets for the town council and ZDRB probably does make financial sense and time sense. Parks and community services, I can't imagine it does. I do think we should do electronic records management, I think it's a good investment. Same thing with security. The Yountville shuttle service expansion, I put a probably not, but I agree with, I agree again with Councilwoman Doran Becker.
Ta-da.
I think it's a valuable, it is, to me, it is right now one of those a little bit untouchable. I mean, in a crisis, it wouldn't, it would not be untouchable, but in our current budget situation, it would be nice to expand that because local residents, you didn't use it, particular seniors and veterans home residents. But I think that there needs to be, if, to make it feasible, I want, I want to know that the business community believes that it has value on their side, and they're willing to contribute to that through the, I mean, the only mechanism I know is either the chamber or the T-Bed. So I think that should be part of it, matching or split program. Calistoga did it all through their T-Bed. I do think that we should do the community day cleanup day funding amount. I think that we're talking about it, and I don't believe that over the long term, that should be supported by general fund items. It's a, it's trash services paid for by users, and I think that that should be folded in through some mechanism in the future. And then you made a comment about the wayfinding signs. I would say this as a business owner and a member of the Chamber of Commerce, I don't think that the town should pay for businesses to have signs unless the town has a sign that says library this way. So if the chamber and businesses think that we need to have signs for their businesses to find them, we, speaking as a business owner, we should pay for it, not the town. That's my perspective on that. I don't think we need to re-review our fees in total. I'm not sure, I think it was Councilwoman Mueller that said it. I do think, based on my personal anecdotal experience at the pool last year and the data that we got, I'm somewhat amazed and dismayed at how many people, how many times I go to the pool and don't recognize hardly anyone there. And as a city councilman in Napa who's running for county supervisor, said to me, there's nothing like this in Napa. Somebody said it to somebody, I don't know if it was me, I heard that. We should probably be charging a little more if it's that great of a service. And I think that, not for residents, but I think if it's, I mean, there's a whole lot of people there that we're subsidizing, and I question that. So I think we should, we can up our revenue recovery that way. What are the appropriate cost recovery targets for parks and rec programs? I've been thinking of this recently, I've been trying to think of how I structure my thinking on it, and I think of it in the funnel mentality, a little bit of, the more people that it serves, the more likely it is that we should be subsidizing it. And the smaller piece of the pie, either by users or population that it serves, the less we should be subsidizing it. So roads or sidewalks, for example, is the maximum because everybody uses that and it's out there. And if we're subsidizing fencing classes and there's eight people using that, then we should really look at high cost recovery. And that should apply to everything, you know, the after-school program, say it, both of my kids are in it, and it's a very important service for the school and for families. But there are other options that the town could explore, whether it's bringing in somebody, a private contractor, looking at ways to reduce costs, looking at higher fees, you know, those type of things. But I don't think we should get rid of services without having a replacement for them when they're something important like that. What projects are we willing to defer? A little bit on the CapEx side, I talked about undergrounding. We're gonna have to figure out some solution, we've been talking about it with this building. I think we can defer the general plan update, we've obviously succeeded at that so far. The subsidy for the Yountville shuttle, not the existing subsidy, I don't think should be deferred. Employee training and development, it's short-sighted to defer that. Funding for Fourth of July fireworks, I think we would all get thrown out of office if we did that. The festival of lights lighting, I know everybody loves it, but to me, sometimes the cost is starting to get to a point where I wonder about it. And I guess it doesn't matter, you put it in, it doesn't matter how long it runs, it's kind of there. So it does seem like a lot for a fairly short amount of time. And that's it. Isn't this gonna be fun yet again?
Thank you.
But thank you.
No, it's just.
I'm just gonna highlight a couple, or make a couple of comments and a couple of points here since there's been a lot of analysis so far. I've heard directly and anecdotally from many boards throughout the county about those entities and other cities going paperless, and there's been virtually no pushback to that transition. Some people feel that it's extremely user-friendly with minimal training. I know that we're all gonna have a different level of familiarity with tablets, but that absolutely appears to be the direction that everyone is going in. And every time I come in here and several staff members have these binders lined up by the dozen, and the hours, I mean, it's not just the tablets themselves, and I know I'm getting agreement from staff, of course. It's crazy how much time and how much material is going into that. So this would be a much more efficient way to do that fundamental business. I'm discouraged by the cost of the additional time with the shuttle as well. If we can try to get creative and find, one of the things that I've kind of learned from the NCTPA model, the largest space on the shuttle says Yountville shuttle. There's an opportunity for sponsorship that I don't think that we've even approached. So I think there are opportunities for, instead of just having one or two signs on the back of the shuttle for local business to purchase and support that town, I think we have other opportunities that we can look at there for some revenue sources. I do like the fact that our shuttle service is now being replicated elsewhere. I kind of like the idea of the replicating of tokens for visitors. It's a way to introduce them to the trolley, make sure they realize it's available for free to get around town, get fewer and fewer people in their cars while they're staying here. A comment on the wayfinding sign costs, I've been to those meetings, and the vast majority of the cost is being put on, it is a burden of the businesses. We're talking about a small percentage of staff time and materials in order to maintain the look and appropriateness of the signage that we would be adding to town. Last two comments, I appreciate a little bit more accurate projections that we're looking at now as opposed to previous years. I think we have gone from that ultra-ultra conservative to appropriately conservative. But as good as it sounded to have a million dollars surplus last year, that's too much surplus, frankly. It was great, we were able to reallocate it, but we were also risking losing some desired services and projects in the meantime. So I like the still conservative but more accurate projections, and the fact that we, as the vice mayor pointed out, are one of the very few communities that can continue to maintain a very high level of service and not have some of the core services or employees at risk. It's very, it's still rare to see that. So, you know, kudos to all the town staff that have been diligently working to make sure that that happens, and to the council frankly for identifying, appropriately identifying our priorities. So with that, I hope that's sufficient direction to get us into the real budget discussions coming up in there. Is there anything else, Kathleen or Steve, that you wanted to touch on, or can we?
We're very pleased, and I do think, to your comments, and one that I do want to stress, we anticipated a bump, the question was no history and trend on how much that revenue bump would be, and I do think we've used the term plateauing, you all talked about it. This is a significant revenue adjustment, if you go back and look at our projections for the community center financing, it was anticipated, and our point is absolutely correct. This is not bonus money. This is, this is money that we have to use smartly because we're not gonna see, we're gonna have nominal growth in our TOT based only on what rate and what little bit we can improve occupancy. And you need to realize that in the season, we're running at 85, 90 percent occupancy, which means there's not a lot of room for growth. Sales tax is also only gonna go up a bit. Now, there are some other tools out there that we might be able to look at, but for the most part, our revenue is going to reach a maturity. So it's a different, it'll be a different planning period as we move forward in those years, and obviously, a key for us is to work with your support to make sure that we're allocating and building up those reserves to meet those long-term needs so that a future council and a future staff has the revenues to do what they need to do.
Yeah, thank you. Let's move on to item 10B, professional office development incentive zoning workshop. And I believe first up will be our planning director.
Thank you. This is a continued discussion of the item that was introduced at the March 20 meeting for the provision of incentives for the development of professional office space in the commercial zoning districts. As you're aware, the professional office use is a permitted use in the residential scale commercial district and a conditional use in the other two commercial districts of Old Town Historic and, oh, excuse me, Old Town Commercial and Primary Commercial. The issue, though, is we have received feedback through inquiries at the planning department of the need for this type of use, and there's a shortage of square footage of professional office in town, and it's an unsatisfied need right now. So we were looking at how to remedy that through incentives, and similar to the residential incentive that's offered, an additional 15 percent in commercial districts for the use and development towards residential units. These would be professional office space, or this space that's developed through this program, would be second level, not street, necessarily street-facing, and be subordinate to the commercial use on the site. The primary incentive we identified would be similar to the residential program to where it'd be 15 percent on top of the 25 percent in commercial that's devoted exclusively to the development of professional office, is not surcharged onto the 25 percent and use for commercial use. So the incentives would be the 15 percent, the, perhaps amending the other two zone districts, commercial zone districts, primary commercial, Old Town Commercial, to allow that use, the professional office use as a permitted use by right rather than having to go through a conditional use permit, provided they met some criteria that were set and defined. Perhaps use of limited tandem parking, and we'd have to proceed carefully with this, and increased consideration for the reduction in the front setback in commercial buildings provided it assisted in the provision of office development. The constraints that we identified in the staff report, the big one is parking. And, you know, to frame the scope of potential development of this type of space, most of the commercial uses are already up to their allowance of FAR and commercial, and they've consumed their available parking space on site for that purpose. That we do have some that have avail themselves of the 15 percent for residential and have limited parking that's devoted to the residential. But there's no extra parking, so to speak, for coming back on the existing buildings and putting commercial on there, or, excuse me, professional office and providing the parking for that. So we're primarily looking at the vacant lots that, there's about three that come to mind, that would be under development, that would have potentially the parking space they could devote to this incentive. And the problem is a little more complicated, that with the residential incentive of saying at 15 percent, the parking ratio is lower than, than it would be for professional office. We currently assess professional office space at one parking space per 300 square feet of floor area. If we had typically a 600 square foot apartment, that we would, that'd be a studio or a one-bedroom, and we would provide one parking space to where it would be two for the professional office. So that's the problem of coming up with additional parking on site, one. And the second one we identified is for these new development of commercial buildings that would have professional office on the second floor, they would be obligated to provide access to that second level. This would be normally in our, the size of lots we have, a, an elevator rather than a ramp system or anything. Whether the project sponsor would evaluate that to be a cost-effective expenditure associated with a project, to come up with, you know, 600 to 1,000 square feet of office is in question. And as we go through all of these, I suppose that's the test we're looking at, is the likelihood of these incentives to effectively generate additional professional office space. The other concerns we have with this would be the additional 15 percent office space. We've, at this point, suggested it be exclusively for a professional office, leasable space that's separate from the commercial use that would be, or uses that would be in the 25 percent commercial space. And the reason, as explained in the staff report, is that if they, one of the commercial uses is occupying the 15 percent, they've essentially surcharged the commercial by moving their office component into the professional office space and freeing up that space for additional commercial use on the first level. There's a counterargument to that, that they need office space, too, and where they put it, maybe that's an effective use of the additional office space, and that would need to be determined. So there's this other question of the 15 percent on top of the 25 percent. Now, would we also allow a 15 percent that we currently have for residential? That would be a total of, with all the incentives in use, 55 percent FAR on a commercial site. It's probably not gonna be an issue in the sense that parking can't be achieved for all of those uses. It's gonna be one or the other. If they take the incentive for residential, they'll lock themselves out of the professional office, contrarwise, professional office with the residential. Basement, currently, we don't count that as FAR, but those basement level could have uses in it that generate parking associated with office, that could have offices in the basement, or move some commercial component into the basement that would also generate parking demand. So we would suggest that the, whatever commercial or office component were in the basement be included in the parking generation calculations. We note that putting all of these uses with the incentive onto these small commercial lots may have the effect of forcing HVAC into attic spaces that are not technically stories, but they will, as we recently saw in a, one of the iterations of the Heston project, they create a bulk to the building that, while it's not a story, you get a roof shape that to screen and house that HVAC equipment, may have a cause-effect when we start pressuring more FAR through these incentives for office. Lastly, the, we would require that the specific conditions extended to office be part of the project that it, the successors to this project would have to keep that space as office, because we're, we're building a fixed, you know, entity in the, in the building, a physical entity, to where it's not easily undone later. It was intended for a purpose and granted the incentive for additional square footage and FAR, that it has to continue that way into the, into the future. and FAR, that it has to continue that way into the, into the future. So those are the points we've come up with so far. Essentially, the incentives amount to FAR and possibly front yard encroachments and possibly tandem, consideration of tandem use associated with the parking use for the professional office.
Great, thank you. I think that was an extremely thorough analysis of the variety of possible uses. I mean, you really did a great job of explaining the long list of what-ifs, which is really helpful so that we can hopefully avoid, for moving forward, any of those unintended consequences in this, so thank you for that. Questions about the staff report before we look for comments? Councilor Hall?
Yeah. Gotta be ready, gotta be ready. Well, this is, so, pardon?
Do you have some questions?
Yes. Do you want to start?
No, no.
Thanks, Bob, for the report. I guess my first question is, I mean, you're, you're coming up with the four suggested incentives, and as I, as I sort of go back in my mind thinking about commercial lease space in town and the zoning that we have, I mean, one of the other ones, I don't, maybe I just missed it, but didn't you also say that potentially with regards to where is that the commercial, the conditional use permits required, which zones are those?
Commercial use permits are required in the primary commercial district and the Old Town.
Okay. So that, then what you're saying is that also could be one, that may be something that we could not restrict, or we could have a limited conditional use, or something where we would not necessarily have a conditional use on that?
If you recall, we recently amended the residential scale when we went through that discussion to have a professional office as a permitted use, to encourage that at that time, along with some other uses that were on the list.
Sorry, just to clarify on that, because you said those two commercial, but RSC requires a use permit as well.
Not, not since the change.
It does not?
Yeah, that, that's why I wanted to make sure I understood it. So it's really just for the, it's for the primary commercial and the Old Town commercial zoning that requires a conditional use. Residential scale does not require the condition.
A recent change.
Thank you. Thank you. I mean, this is relatively complicated, because are there a lot of commercial space, is there a lot of commercial space available or anticipated going forward?
Well, we can name them, the vacant lots would be vacant or underdeveloped, let's say.
Hillstone.
Yes, well, Hillstone, but they're, they're kind of locked in to their parking scheme right now with the uses they have.
I guess that's right.
I was thinking more of the lot adjacent to Ranch Market.
Oh, right.
Residential scale commercial. The Stewart Lot where McGrath's Garage.
Yep.
To be redeveloped. And then the PJ Steak, formerly PJ Steak.
Vida. Is that it?
That would be it.
French Laundry Garden, not funny, not funny. Okay, so it's really just those, it's just those three, today, as we sit today, it's really just those three lots that we're talking about.
Well, yes, and there may be some potential over at Vintage Estates and V Marketplace, and they have a lot of parking there, and they, they have a couple of buildings, the old compadres and the, although I don't think their direction is looking at office space, but maybe.
They could come back and apply for some of that. And part of what I struggle with with some of these analyses is, you know, the, what's currently available in town, I mean, really limits the discussion to almost selective parcels. And so, I mean, that's why, looking at this initially and saying, we're going to provide a bonus to, you know, for, for someone to create commercial lease space, are these really, are these spaces in their high visibility likely to attract that kind of development?
Well, if I could just, I will comment.
Please.
We just saw, we're watching Hillstone totally demolish and rebuild Washington Square.
Right.
PJ Steak existed, it no longer exists. There are opportunities for complete transformation of existing parcels. So just looking at the under or undeveloped vacant spaces now is not going to limit this potential implication.
Fair enough, fair enough. I, I would, I would be challenged to think that someone would come in and take out one of those parcels and find a higher value or return on putting commercial space in, which is why we want to provide the incentive. So I, I think we're all saying the same thing. So with that, I'm going to leave my, my question for now, because I don't think I can formulate one that's more clear. Now I know the, the current scope of what we're really trying to address, potentially trying to address, and obviously, we'd be looking forward into the future, but I just, so I can get my brain around it, because it's, as you said, he succinctly created this, the report, but it's not as easy to wrap my head around what benefit necessarily we would derive by providing incentive to create commercial space in arguably today, three spaces that would, as an investor or developer, assuming I recognize what Yountville does and is, I would want to make commercial space developments.
Well, I think what we're talking about is an opportunity, and that's simply what it is. It's an opportunity for us to say, if, we might look at something, otherwise you go back and default to the minimum. It's an option.
Right.
And some of the, you know, you've asked us or tasked us with how to be more creative, recognizing we're reaching build-out. And, you know, for us to, you know, here we are trying to, in a favorable way based on what your objectives are, try to influence the remainder development to fit some of those unmet needs.
Yeah, and I want to just get back to getting some questions asked of the report now, and then we'll have a little more open dialogue about the messaging, so.
No, no further questions.
Questions, Councilor Mueller?
Well, it's exactly a follow-on to Councilmember Hall's. And I think I have the answer to this, but this would also apply, this wouldn't just be spot zoning to these three parcels. So if somebody came in and wanted to tear down the Ranch Market and put up a really big office complex with all these extra height requirements and all this stuff and parking, that's what we're talking about as well.
That could happen. Yes, and, you know, in the one, in the instances where we have allowed the fifteen percent for residential, they could conceivably come back and do whatever needs to be done to convert that to office if, and add more if they want to convert over the, some of their parking and dedicate it to professional office.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilwoman Dornbecker, questions?
Yes, please. So I'm wondering, and as your last statement on here says, while the need for office space exists, one metric to assess, the potential effectiveness of the proposed ordinance amendments is the likelihood of the incentives to generate professional office space. I'd like to know, in the last five years, how many applicants for professional office space have approached the town for user permits?
For to develop a professional office space? Probably zero. But the thing of it is, they subsequently come to appreciate that they need office space themselves, and then we have other, associated with their business. And I'm really coming to the understanding, or have some time ago, that nothing's set, they, these businesses are continually morphing into other ventures and as opportunities present themselves, and seeing the need for additional office and converting space already. Like, we look at North Block Hotel, they recently went through that in their basement. So it's, it's not so much that, at the time they come in, they are proposing professional office, but we have people separate from the businesses needing office space in Yountville, and those that do develop frequently later on determine that they need office space.
And if I could also, I think, Councilmember Dornbecker, excellent question, because we haven't had the developer come to that. The secondary question that is a more one that we get quite often is, a lot of local businesses, including some of our very successful restaurants and some of our other, they come to us going, we need office space, where, where can we go? I mean, we have, and I'm not, you know, we are, we are all very familiar with a recent case that we're working on, but just honestly, in the last three weeks, Bob and I have been approached by three existing, successful local businesses that need more office, and they really would prefer to keep them, you know, locally rather than having to segregate some of their staff from their primary. So for us, that's why we're bringing this to you. I don't know that we have, you know, I don't know that we've got the right answer, but I.
I understand. So I would like to sort of ask the question again. Since you are finding that people are coming to you with a need, do we need incentives? It's a question, in your estimation.
Well, again, they, what becomes the, usually the limiting factor is parking, and they'd rather devote that parking to their commercial. And I will, on top of that, say though, when the opportunity is there, I've found the project sponsors, twenty-five percent is a low FAR, it just is, for commercial. You go to, you know, you go up to St. Helena, it could be two hundred percent, two stories filling up the entire block, you know, lot of sun. So it's, it's low, and when the incentive presents itself, they will take it. And we found that at Summerston, at Hotel Yount, or, excuse me, the Luca, at the time they were coming through. If we had an incentive for, for office, they may take that.
Okay.
It's just a choice out there for them, they may never take it, but it's a choice they can take.
Thank you.
All right, is there any questions?
Two questions, on page two, under your suggested incentives. Item two says amend the primary commercial and Old Town commercial zoning districts to allow the professional office use by right. I assume that professional office use is allowed by right already in RSC? Is that correct?
In the what?
In the RSC?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And my other question is on page three, under your concerns, item three, on page three, it says basement square footage while exempt from FAR calculations shall be included in the, into the parking generation requirement calculation. I didn't, I'm not, I don't care about the in the into. It says shall be included, is, does that mean today, when you have basement square footage, I just want to confirm that we do include that square footage in parking calculations?
When?
The word shall makes me think that it's, you want to change it that way. Is it that way today, or do you think it should be?
Well, the way it is today, one, we have one basement under Luca, or under Hotel North Block.
Yes.
So at the time that went through, the uses essentially were the spa and storage and some other kitchen-related, there's storage down there for the kitchen. They were associated with the operations already in the hotel for the guests. So most of that was not assessed additional parking, because it was figured into amenities for the guests.
Okay, so that, that specific situation, there was no retail square footage or professional office space or square footage applied to that, it was, it was back to the hotel rooms?
Right.
And the restaurant?
Yes, and, but the notion here would be that if someone were willing to go to the expense of putting in a basement and started leasing space in that separate, and that space generated office visits, and then we probably ought to be assessing the parking demand.
Okay, so that's kind of a, you think it should be included. I'm sorry, may I have one more question? Under, on page two, the other concerns, number one, I guess my, I think you bring up a really good question when it comes to whether it is associated with an onsite use versus it's being leased to someone external. And I was thinking of the masonry situation as the perfect example of, would we really forbid masonry from using their own office space for themselves if they needed it, and say you have to lease it somewhere else, and you've got to lease that to somebody else, you've got this, you know, one winery here is trading with somebody else for their office space and buildings. So my first, I guess my comment was the hesitancy to overregulate that. But on the flip side, exactly to your point of what you just said about North Block Hotel, how would we, or could we, or maybe we just say, this could happen or it might not happen, how do we know it would really be used as professional office space as opposed to wine storage and simply, you know, just an extension of the existing commercial retail? And maybe the difference there is, as you said, is, hey, you want to have this space, you have to have extra parking. And it's really no different on the intensity of use than, say, having an apartment there. I mean, have you, what is your, you know, kind of what's your thought on that concern?
Yeah, that was expressed in another point where I talked about intrusion of the commercial use into this intended office space and a mechanism to prevent that. It would be the same as, you know, doing residential bonus incentive FAR and then having it used for a purpose, not as intended. We would, that would be a code enforcement item, and yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll have some comments on that then. That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any member, Mr. Warren, would you like to comment or question? No, thank you. Okay, so let's have the final discussion on this item. Any specific direction we'd like to give staff on this? Generally speaking, are we supportive of this proposal? And if so, are there any other last comments about it? Let's keep it rolling. Councilmember Hall, please.
Since I went first and still couldn't gather my thoughts, I'll see if they've come together now. I mean, I do see the value in providing the incentive to, to have or to allow for this professional office use. I mean, there clearly is a lack of that in town. I mean, there's really only one professional office building that I'm familiar with, and it's obviously full, and it's not used a hundred percent for that either. So to the extent that we can incent either new construction or any existing that's going to be renovated to include some of that, not just for the, necessarily for the benefit of the existing owners that are converting, but potentially to lease out to others might be of particular interest. I do, I do question how much, you know, if the incentive is, and I'm assuming this would be significant enough to drive a developer to want to create that, I mean, we can't obviously predict the future and what level of incentive is necessary, but what I like about it is that in, in general, there is no relative dollar value associated with the town. It's not as if we're trading off something on a dollar wise for them to be able to add this or to encourage this type of development. I do question whether or not it ultimately would be done by any future growth. I mean, I think if we look around the businesses as they've come into town, the, you know, they fall, it's real easy, follow the money, you know, just take a look around the town and see what's being developed. And if you say it's not wine tasting rooms, then I don't know where you're living or looking at this point in time. That said, I think providing this, this direction of incentive makes sense. I'm not sure if this is exactly the type of incentive, but it certainly beats, you know, writing them a check or giving them other dollar-related activity or value, you know, chits to use in the town. And parking, I think, you know, obviously, I hate to think that we're going to put additional or less constraint on parking so that people will develop these kinds of facilities, especially in the north end of town. That's not the necessarily intent, but if that is what it ultimately does, is to require less parking, or pardon me, provide them the ability to have fewer parking spaces for commercial, is that the intent? No, it's more. Okay, it's backwards.
We're basically saying, parking is the one area we really can't make a great exception on.
Okay.
A lot of the other areas, and what we're trying to point out is, office actually requires more parking sometimes than residential.
More, because it's more intensive. Okay, so they're not getting a benefit from that. So as long as we're consistent with that application, then I would feel, I mean, this is directionally where I would, I feel okay with it. I don't know, Bob, if that helps, but it's a starting point.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Well, first I'll start with the easy part, and that's thanking Bob for such a really well-balanced report. I think that I've heard almost everyone say that you've really given us, given us a lot of, you know, perspective that includes kind of both sides, that I think generally, I'm kind of okay, but I really think this needs a little further discussion. It's complicated, and I just don't know if I've really been able to. It's complicated, and I just don't know if I've really been able to think through thoroughly enough, just, you know, reading this myself and asking a few questions, you know, whether we really want to go forward. I think, actually, I saw it in one of the recommendations that, and I don't know if you're talking about tonight, but maybe we need another workshop, in my opinion. Really, I'd like to hear, you know, this might be a good idea from, you know, a joint ZDRB meeting, you know, to get, they've got some professional developers on there, some architects.
If I could interrupt, I'll just clarify, there is no action on this tonight.
Right, but that's what I'm proposing.
There already, we have no ability to take action on this anyway, so this is all informational.
Right, that's, yeah, that's my information, that, you know, I would probably make that recommendation, that I'm not, I think this does warrant further discussion, and that's how I'd like to continue that further discussion, is, you know, maybe through one of those mechanisms, having, you know, maybe you invite some of the local businesses to kind of hear what they have to say, the ZDRB, whatever you might want to do, so we could continue these discussions. Because I think you've really brought up some critical issues in terms of parking. We don't want to, that was one of the biggest problems besides what we kind of ran into with the zoning not being correct, the house that was being rented out for parking place, I mean, for business use. Parking was just chaotic over there. It was really, we don't want to create another mess. So, is it really, if we can really figure out a good way to get that under control, I think that would be the next step. Also, the access to the second floor, I mean, once you add all this stuff on, is this really doable? I mean, maybe one of our experts could kind of, you know, sketch something out on a new lot to show us how this might work. I don't know how they would come up with that, so I think those would probably be my general direction. We need a little more discussion. I'd like just a basic, also, definition of what's a professional office space? And also, this, if somebody builds one for a business, but they can't really use it, and they have to rent it out to somebody else, that requires a little more, how do we really enforce that? We haven't been able to, or maybe it just takes a lot of time to really enforce the residential component to the RSC. So, this is going to be even more, is that really doable for the staff? Are you going to, you know, try to look at leases, or does that make sense? I don't know. So, I'm willing to continue the discussion, I don't think we're there, but I think you've brought up a lot of great points here, and the general direction I favor.
Yeah, we're definitely going to continue this conversation. There's no question about that.
And I think a question on that theme, Bob raised a question, and we weren't saying a definitive answer, so one of the things that we would probably like some feedback from you, we asked, you know, is it a bad thing? You know, we're phrasing it two ways and asking, is it such a bad thing if somebody builds a business and ends up using the office space for themselves? So, you know, we're talking about a scenario, but, you know, we're offering it two ways, so some feedback. Staff's not saying that's a bad thing, and we don't necessarily want to get into some fault. I think a good comparison for you all to think of a framework would be, if, you know, we can use some of our more recent development, if Somersden and that upper story was an office, either for themselves or for somebody else, instead of a residential unit, would that be a bad thing? And that's what we're trying to see, if this is what we could end up with. The same way, you know, we've got four units that are a bit of a challenge for us to manage over at Hotel North Block. So, I just, I don't know if it's a good example, but those are the most recent things that probably, from a staff perspective, we can share with you, that utilized the incentive program, maximized it, and if, you know, in both of those, if those were offices and meeting those needs and the development, you know, the one thing, we do want to be very clear, staff's not recommending any waivers on parking. We're just not going there. That is not the one thing we can do in this town.
Right. Councilmember Dorenbecker?
Yes, I have three comments. One is that I believe that we should amend the primary commercial and Old Town Commercial to allow professional office space if we are going to propose that we want to encourage office space in town. My second point is that I don't, I don't think that a total of 55% FAR is acceptable, but a combination of the 30 or the, whatever the other add-up number is, 40 or whatever it is, that would be acceptable. And I agree on the parking component should be similar to commercial, maybe not as rigid, but those are my three.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Well, my first comment is, I, we've talked about it a little bit, I think the tendency to assume we know what's going to happen in the future, I think we should not assume that. I mean, I made the comment about the French Laundry Garden, I got laughed at. But, I mean, 18 months ago, that was an approved hotel, right? I mean, so, things can happen and will happen in the future. To me, this is a zero-cost-to-the-town idea, nothing hurts from trying to do it, I very strongly support it, I think it makes sense. I think the more flexibility we give simply gives more additional opportunities. I very much agree that, just the, if you think about some of the extra office space that exists in town, the idea that you have to put an elevator in there now is, would just make them, they would never put it in. It's just a cost prohibitive factor. But why take away that flexibility? I agree on, specifically on two points with Councilwoman Dorenbecker, we should put in the professional office use as a permitted right, even forgetting about the incentive program, I think, in Old Town Commercial and Primary Commercial. And I also agree that, I really think that our FAR is extraordinarily low, and it's very restrictive compared to a lot of places. I remember when David Fink was developing Hotel Luca, he said Carmel was 150%. And I don't think anybody would consider Carmel to be an overly urbanized, you know, they've kind of got a village feel there as well. So, that being said, I think the biggest problem there is our open space policy as opposed to our 25% FAR, because I think it really limits people's ability to do things. So, I agree that the 40% total should be in place, if you want to do an office instead of a residential apartment, that's fine with me. And I do think Somersden is probably the best example of somebody who said, I've got a small piece of property, it's very expensive, I've got to maximize the revenue I can get from it, and having an additional spot to do that from, let's let people try. So, in general, I think that, I don't think we're that far from this being where it needs to be. The one thing I want to say is that this idea of, can it be used by the existing business for their own use versus it has to be leased out to somebody else? When you say it would be an enforcement issue, I don't like to hear that. I think we should create as few enforcement issues as possible and not try to get in, we've seen that problem with other places of, how do you really measure what we've instituted? And some things, we just, that we can't avoid that. But I do think in this situation, by keeping the parking requirement in there, that protects the town by saying it's going to be used office space, you can't turn it into, you know, retail space for your customers, and I think that's a positive thing, provided the parking piece stays, which I'm sure we all agree with. So, otherwise, I personally think we're pretty close. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Just a couple comments, trying to avoid repetition. I would not support restricting the primary commercial use from using the office space. I think that kind of is counterintuitive. Wouldn't want to penalize one business for being in that space, but for me, it is an enforcement issue, we would have to make sure that that retail, or the office space is properly used. We've seen other properties in the town abuse space that was dedicated for one purpose and they used it for another, so. But the other thing that's not been discussed at all is ADA compliance. And I worry that we're creating a situation that would not be in compliance with ADA in terms of, if I understand it very generally speaking, there has to be disabled access to any activity on a property, and if you're creating office space upstairs and not requiring disabled access like an elevator, are we creating an illegal condition? Because, or, does there have to be an equally accessible use on the first level? So, I'm not sure if you can speak to that, but that's one thing that I noticed was missing in here, was, is that a problem? Because I remember there was an issue, again, with Somersden, in the use of the second, the B building terrace, and an issue of who can get up there for access? Could it be open space if it was only accessible by stairs? So, I'm not sure if you can speak to that now, or if that's something you want to address as we move further in the conversation.
New development does require access to the second level for commercial projects, not for residential, though. Existing retrofitted projects, it's more complicated there, there are hardships, there's a definition of creating a hardship or the building does not lend itself to that conversion, and there's also a formula for how much work is being done dollar-wise that would trigger the requirement. So, it's possible that an existing retrofit may not fall under it, but new development does.
And I appreciate that answer absolutely, because that's exactly what I was worried about. I would, I would ask, as we have this discussion in more detail further on, that we bet that a little bit more and make sure that we aren't creating a condition that we can't really create. So, I think that's sufficient direction for tonight, I hope so. Great, so with that, let's move on to item 10C, which is a wayfinding sign program update. Staff report, please.
Thanks. Got some slides I want to get to here. We had a workshop on March 15th with the business community, and we covered some alternatives with them for the wayfinding sign program. Mainly, we were interested in the design of the sign itself, the post clusters, how they're going to look, and we also went through a, locations of these clusters, which we won't do tonight, but we will later on at a later meeting. As you recall, the direction that came out of earlier meetings with the business community and Town Council was, they did not want this program to resemble what you see in other cities, Hillsburg, Sonoma, so forth. They wanted it more pedestrian in scale, they did not want the use of individual logos, colors, fonts on these signs, they wanted them all uniform. So, what we came up with on the signs themselves were three options, and what, I know that your materials show all of this in blue background, but the preferred alternative that came out of the business community was a black background with white lettering on it. So, we had these amended to reflect that. So, on this graphic up on the screen right now, what you're looking at is, it's really the two left options, one is a double-sided in the center, and then on one side otherwise. What they came up with, when they looked at the signs, they were presented three alternatives for the actual sign itself. One of the alternatives was a laminate, which is just a flat surface, and it can be any color you want, but it's on metal. They also looked at a raised letter off of a metal background, and again, the metal can be any powder-coated, any color, generally looking at black or something similar to that. And then, this alternative, which is a porcelain enamel, and while, this is a company that does these porcelain enamels, and we probably won't be going with this company, because they're in Gibraltar, but it gives you an idea, idea of what these look like. This would be, this would be kind of representative of the sign a little bit. It's about the same dimensions as we're looking at, it's a black background, white lettering. We will also have centered justification on the text. All of the letters will be in all caps in our case. There are some trim borders that I'm a little, I think is unresolved at this point, meaning a border around the lettering, and in this case, they have no border example here, a single border and a double border, and I think the discussion at the business community level was whether to have no border or at least a single border, if anything. Other similarities here is the fasteners. We looked at an alternative that minimized that, just two at either side, and it was decided it looks better at four corners. That's another graphic we have here. So, we have the sign, it's 10 and 1/4 inches, and then 3 and 1/4. All of this is mounted on a substrate piece of quarter-inch aluminum that will be powder-coated black, so this sign will go on that heftier piece of metal that actually is fastened to the post. Separate from the identification sign is an arrow, a directional arrow, that will have the four fasteners as well, made out of the same material, porcelain enamel. The, as you can see here, this is more representative of the font to be used, and will have two lines, one is the business name on top, in larger letters, an inch tall, and 3/4 of an inch would be a description of the business, if necessary. If restaurants in the name, probably don't need restaurant below on the second line, but they may want a summary description of what the business offers on the second line. So, as you can see by this, the scale of this person, the post itself is proposed to be five feet in height, these are meant not to be read from a car, but from, by pedestrians. They are 11 sides, signs to a side. We were contemplating the opposite of, that's the maximum, but what does it take minimum? You don't want one blade on one post if that's all you're getting in a location. We have a total of 13 locations up and down Washington that will have these signs on them. And so, we were looking at a minimum of four at least signs on a post, where there would be a blank sign for some reason, that there's no business ahead, or it's kind of at one of the extremes of the program, and there's nothing to go that way. The black, the substrate is powder-coated black, so it will match the black of the porcelain enamel, and it could be either left blank, or the town could have a sign made that would direct, direct the visitor to a public park or town hall or some facility that's public, rather than having, you know, as a filler, rather than having a blank spot. So, the double-sided are probably going to be more, they'll be used in the more denser locations where the businesses are, such as at V Marketplace location. And those will, they'll be two-sided, not necessarily the same sign on both sides, because the idea is that to announce what's ahead of you with a directional arrow, or what's near you but isn't readily visible from the sidewalk, many of the businesses in V Marketplace are in that situation. These clusters are generally located at entrances to where you would enter to one of those businesses, and they're generally designed, the locations to be seen from one point, if you looked way down, you could see another cluster. The, also, on other features of the posts will be, these will be fastened in a channel where the where they'll slide in and out, a metal channel. They'll have a cap on top. The preference from the business community was this low pyramid that will be powder-coated black as well. There'll be a map, town map, with the typical you are here with streets and other public points of interest, public parking, public restrooms, ATMs, police department, or sheriff's department, type of thing.
Where, sorry, where will that be?
It's mounted on the post itself. It's going to be, again, it's not meant to be read from a car, you're going to be standing in front of it, but it'll be about five and a half inches wide. And because, fortunately, we're, we're dealing with a lineal configuration of Washington, it'll hopefully go right down the post. We'll also have other signs that will announce walking distance from the south, more central portion of the commercial district to the north end of town. And as you go along that pathway, there'll be additional information that, you're, you're only two minutes now. It's about six minutes to walk from, say, Bouchon to the north end of town. So, we'll have these along the pathway, letting them know they're on track, and it's not much further. And that's intended to, you know, six, a six-minute walk, you really don't want to get in your car and then have to park again, and... So, that's kind of the program right now that we're looking at. And what we're busy now is the consultant, we are, we've, sign consultant we're using as generating costs for some of these materials, and we'll be generating costs on our end. We intend to have the posts fabricated by Public Works, if that's feasible, and I think it will be. The, they'll be mounted in a breakaway, in case a car hits them, they'll be designed to break away. We're, in a couple of cases, most of these will be in planter strips that are public right-of-way, but there's a couple of instances where we'll be looking at securing easement, because it makes better sense to have them off of the inboard side, so to speak, of the sidewalk and on private property. It's kind of the program right now, program's direction. If there's any questions, I'd like to answer.
Any questions about the program? No? No questions? No questions? What do you think of that?
Great.
There has been some good dialogue with the business community. Certainly, those areas that have clusters of retail, like Piazza Quercha, V Marketplace, Edward James Courtyard, those are very interested in this. But others are as well, in terms of connecting north and south town, so that there's no, you know, quitting as you get, you know, up toward Vandeleer Park, and you, a visitor doesn't realize that there is more opportunity at the north end, or vice versa. And frankly, for some locals who have forgotten, there are certain retail spaces in some of these buildings, so...
And I will point out, when we're looking at the cost factor, the reason we did bring to you the potential of a $5,000 to $10,000 one-time investment from the town is that we do intend to try to have some consistency, and, you know, town hall, and the map that Bob was telling you. So, we kind of felt that this might be a logical one-time investment, if you will, sort of for that central post and a little, but everything else is going to be on a subscription basis, and they actually have to cover the full cost of the, the individual blade, as Bob refers to it, and then a little bit more built in, because we'll try to do it on a two-a-year renewal type thing, so we can minimize our administration. But I do think we're, we're learning an awful lot about this. The project has probably not moved as fast as we originally thought it would, when we sat down and said, this can't be that complex to map out and do, and get everybody's buy-in, and how wrong were we?
And there are more details that really aren't necessary at this point about some of the things that the business community brought up.
I do want to echo, I think the vast majority of the business community, the first thing they'll ask is, well, it's free, right? And then when we explain it, they're willing to pay. And if they're not, that's okay, they won't go on there. Because the rest of the business community has clearly said, yes, they understand we're supporting it, and we'll underwrite a little bit. So, I think we've made a, a lot of movement, and then hopefully we'll go to production at the summer.
Mr. Warren, did you want to have any comment about this, since you're representing the entire town tonight? No? Okay. No? I don't think so. Okay, let's, let's move on to, do we have any staff informational reports tonight?
Yes, we do. I would love to present, and it's our distinct pleasure to produce and show with you, the Town of Yountville Strong Cities Strong State Campaign went live today. Our profile is now part of the statewide campaign, and technical difficulties hopefully resolved. We would like to showcase what that looks like. For those of you, we'll have a link, it'll also be on our website.
Yeah, we're right there, and we're still at the top of the recent cities list, that's good. Because eventually, we're going to be at the bottom of the alphabetical list, unfortunately.
Again, what's nice about this effort, it's a joint effort of the League of California Cities and the California City Management Foundation, and the focus is to chronicle success stories and activities and successes in our community. And as you know, in Yountville, we do have more than a few to be proud of. So, in particular, working with the partners, we're profiling the construction of the community center, our local land use planning decisions that are, been made to emphasize what's unique about our character, our fiscal stability, and our community involvements, with a big shout-out to Yountville Arts for all the various things that they've been successful with, and our...
Excuse me, Steve, if I could just interrupt you for a second. If you could just let us see some of these photos, I looked at them today, but...
Down below.
Yeah, while Steve's giving his overview, and then we can maybe look at some of the details, because I know that they, they rotate automatically, so that just gives us a chance to see some of the highlights. So, go ahead, Steve, sorry.
And then our last profile, success story, is our creation of the Tourism Improvement District, again, working on trying to maximize our economic base, which ties into our fiscal stability platform. The profile has some testimonials from some community members about working with the community, and it also profiles the council and the council manager form of government, and talks about the partnership. We received some feedback from some of the League staff that are working on this, and they complimented us on, one, the quality and the thoroughness in which our application and materials were submitted, which meant we followed the instructions well, and it was a good process, which is always helpful. But I also think League was very impressed with the effort that we went to, to try to make sure that we identified pictures, and our stories resonated with the nature of our community. Press releases were sent out, and will be going to the local media, and the site now is live and available. So, I would encourage a lot of folks to take a good look at it. It's a, a nice profile of our business community, our residents, and it really showcases the community well. And I do want to put a nice shout-out to Mars Lazar, Michael Shear, and Rob Winterberg, who have donated a lot of the pictures to the town that have ultimately been presented. So, anyway, we're...
Steve, also, if I could just add to that real quickly, right below that, if you get down to the Yountville Council, and those types of boxes, when you view profile, it takes us straight to the Town of Yountville website.
That's correct.
Can I click on it?
Sure, if we could just see that happen. So, there is a direct connection to our site, which is going to potentially help...
Great.
Yeah, if you view council, then I, then it goes to the individual bios. And there we are. So, it'll connect some folks just to the Town of Yountville site, which is also a good addition. And then, as, as the town manager was pointing out, we got some very good, on the far-left column, the testimonials from some of our business community about how it is so advantageous to work with the Yountville town staff, and what good relationships we have with them. So, yes, I want to thank the staff for helping gather all this information, because it's really, it's free publicity, and it does give us an opportunity to pat ourselves on the back, which is totally appropriate.
And actually, that's one of the real themes that in today's media awareness, what we're starting to realize is, if we don't tell our story, nobody else does. And it's just a sad reality, but we, we need to be able to make sure that the public is aware of what's going on, and there's a lot of emphasis on the negativity of government, and the reality is, we still do an awful lot of good for our community. And we're very fortunate, we live in a community where most of the time, our residents do acknowledge that. Occasionally, we got a little, but for the most part, I do think we live in a community that people appreciate and do understand that...
Yes. Thank you for that report. Let's move on to committee reports. Start with Napa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. Did you have any comments about the most recent?
No comment.
Yeah, today, the, I was thinking NCTPA, sorry. Today, the flood control did meet primarily what they did, again, as they always do, we'll give an update on the Napa Flood Project and its construction progress, and so we did see some new photos of that. But also, they gave us a kind of a refresher on the 25 or 20-year budget projection for the Measure A funding of the flood control project. And, so that was a good reminder, because there are some folks, especially in this phase of discussion about a countywide sales tax measure, that would potentially start as soon as the flood tax ends in 2018. There is some concern about, well, what happens if there isn't sufficient funding in place by the end of that Measure A period? And so, this was kind of a reminder of how there is significant maintenance and long-term funding in place. And unfortunately, some of that does depend on California and the federal government. So, those are the, the variables out there. So, we're going to continue to monitor that on a, probably a semi-annual basis. Moving on to Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency, did you have any comments from the most recent meetings, meeting?
The last meeting of NCTPA, which was a week or two ago, two weeks ago, I guess, was the longest NCTPA meeting I think I've ever attended. It went till five o'clock, so three and a half hours, and NCTPA is a long one. A couple of the highlights of the, of the, the meeting, NCTPA took at least the first step of passing next year's budget, which is a $21 million budget. And a lot of that, I shouldn't say a lot of that, but there's some significant capital expenditures, the new transit center is part of the reason that sounds a little higher than normal. The sales tax was, the transportation sales tax was further discussed. There's been a lot of activity in that arena, most of which I actually think have, have improved that potential proposition. I guess we'll find out tomorrow. There's a special meeting tomorrow of the Napa Valley Transportation Authority, which is kind of under the same umbrella, to recirculate to all of the councils throughout the county, a final draft version, or a final version of the ballot proposition. And there's been a move to make 100%, or essentially 99% of the money go to road and streets maintenance, not the 10% carve-out for other items. Really, I think there's moves to simplify the, the, the tax proposal, and make it as clear as possible, as direct as possible, and to try to get as much trust from the public as possible on what it is that is being used, and what it would not be used for. So, there'll be more to report on that. And then the last item, as, I guess it doesn't surprise anyone, but it did actually happen, the Napa County Commission on Arts and Culture was officially disbanded. The, that is now going to go to the Napa County Supervisors. I mean, essentially, there is no commission anymore, or committee, and the Napa County Supervisors at, I think sometime this month...
April 10.
Thank you. I didn't think it was today. Are going to decide whether to reconstitute that in some way, if they wish to, or how that's going to move forward. If that does occur, I have seen correspondence that says that essentially, our appointee, who we disappointed, and we told, you know, that all the appointments are now moot, and if there's a new commission, depending on whatever the structure is of that, that anyone would have to reapply to be on that board, under whatever the new structure is. So, whether there is representation from all the different cities, whether it's simply a county commission, and the board supervisor appoints it, whatever, it's a clean slate, start all over, and decide. So, I will be interested, just from a, you know, from the perspective of knowing what's happened in the past, to see what the board actually does. And tomorrow, at 10:00 AM, is the official groundbreaking for the Jameson Canyon widening. That is finally here. So, that groundbreaking is happening at 10:00 AM. I don't actually know where it's at.
Rialto Winery?
Is it at Rialto? Okay, so the old Kirkland Ranch Winery along...
Across from Chardonnay and Gold Course.
Exactly. There, there will be a groundbreaking with Caltrans there tomorrow, and then at 11:00 tomorrow, back at the NCTPA offices, will be the special session to deal with the sales tax. I'm not sure if I missed anything.
No, I was just going to add to the Arts Commission status. There has been a proposal reached in agreement by both the Arts Council of Napa Valley and the Arts Commission, that they have presented to the county, and Larry Florin would be overseeing on the county's behalf, this new structure. It could be constituted very similarly to the existing commission structure. They are also proposing how the county funds would be distributed, which has been a primary mission of the Arts Commission, but also a primary point of contention between those two agencies. And one of the things that the supervisors made clear at an earlier meeting was, these two primary arts organizations need to work together to warrant distribution of the county funds. So, that's the, I think there is a strong expectation, though I'm not going to speak for the board of supervisors, that they are still interested in having a body represent the arts and cultural effort in the valley. And so, we will find out. Staff, county staff is making a couple proposals, I think, as options, so we should find out on April 10. So, and thank you, you did a nice thorough job of covering some of the other points. And I will say that the Arts Commission, there were several members there, and they sat through three and a half hours of everything else, for five minutes of, you're now dissolved. So, that was rather challenging.
Including the Yountville representative.
Yeah, she's, yeah, she was there and stuck it out, so... Anyway, are there other committee reports? Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, I have a report from my first meeting of the Watershed Information Center and Conservancy. And they gave updates on the 2012 fisheries monitoring efforts in the Napa River, and it was all good news there, and they debated the pros and cons of two different kinds of ways to count. There's a hoop net to count the fish, or a rotary screw-top method. And anyway, that was very interesting. There was also an announcement of the Napa Valley Historical Ecology Atlas, which has just been published by Robin, Robin Grossinger, Director of the Historical Ecology at San Francisco Estuary Institute. And that's a very beautiful and wonderful, interesting book. There'll be a book signing May 24th at Copia, which is an interesting locale, since nobody's been in there for a while, so that might be very interesting. There was a presentation of the San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board on the Napa River Total Maximum Daily Load, including status report on the grazing waiver enrollment, and resources availability for ranch plans and compliance, and work to date on vineyard waiver development. So, that's something that they're, you know, reaching out to the stakeholders and getting them on board, and that was a lot of, a lot of very technical information, but I did grasp it, and I found it very interesting. There was a report on a grant by the US EPA and Napa County Measure A that talks about the implementation of the total maximum daily load. And they have conducted five interrelated sub-projects to reduce sediment along the, in the river watershed, and polluted runoff, and to restore habitat. So, they recommended for residents who... So they recommended for residents who are not property owned, large property owners, that there are things that we can do to help, which are reduce pesticides in our gardening and take public transportation to reduce the TMD, total daily, total maximum daily load of toxins that are going into the river. And finally, they did an incredibly interesting, a beautiful presentation on the Selby Creek Stream Bank restoration that the Bio Engineering Associates did. And they had five, 15 landowners. That is located at Larkmead Lane near Silverado Trail and they showed the process and it was a totally dry creek bed, there was nothing there and there were, all the vegetation had died and it was awful when they began. And it took four years and it covered five miles and included 15 landowners who also loaned some of their vineyard workers to help and local high school kids came out and helped. But four years later, it looks beautiful, it's, the water's back, the trees are growing and the fish are back. So it was a wonderful committee.
Great, thank you, thanks very much. Go on, do any announcements or comments that council might have? Well, if you have any, we'll leave the mic open.
Did you want a report on the Community Services Policy Committee from the League of California Cities? Or no?
No, I don't think we need to at this time. Yeah, so, okay. Councilor Mueller?
I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that there is a strategic plan, five, 10, 30 year plan that's going on at our veterans home here in Yountville. And organization's been hired by the state of California to be the leaders in putting that together. And there was a hour and a half presentation on the scope and some of the goals and objectives of that plan in March. And the next meeting, tomorrow's a busy day, I know for everybody, will, that's supposed to occur at nine o'clock tomorrow in Grand Hall, is that right? So.
And I believe Graham is going to be there to represent the town's interests.
Okay.
Since we actually heard about this meeting ahead of time.
Yeah, I'll be going there too to, I can pass out notes from both meetings. So I think that's an important thing to see, the progress they're going to make in kind of scoping out some changes up at the veterans home, so that's all.
Any other announcements or comments? I, I did want to just acknowledge, despite the inclement weather, another successful taste of Yountville. I know it wasn't as big a moneymaker as the chamber would like, but it still drew several thousand people to town, hardcore Yountville fans clearly. But we had, what I will say, given the conditions especially, in years past, we've seen vendors leave early. I didn't see anybody leave early. There were people here through the day and what is a benefit to the town is when the weather is like that, they often end up going for shelter in our restaurants. And so there's still a little bit of additional benefit to the town. But I wanted to acknowledge again, the strong volunteer effort that the residents give and partner with the chamber and the town on that. And there was an extremely successful Open Studios exhibition throughout the weekend. Our Yountville Arts Committee staff helped put that on and they did a fantastic job committing their entire three day weekend to being there, manning it. And there were several pieces that were sold and the Yountville Arts Committee will be benefiting by some of those sales with commissions, so that's again, an added bonus. But Open Studios was very impressed and satisfied with that effort and so kudos to the Arts Committee and the volunteer effort again. With that, future agenda items, just looking at our quarterly reports and public safety coming up, presentation from the Yountville Chamber of Commerce, our monthly Allied Council update, and we'll be talking signage, it looks like, sign ordinance coming up. With that, do we have closed session items for this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are two items on the agenda that we would request that the council consider in closed session.
And any anticipated reportable action?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you very much for that. So we will adjourn to closed session right now, just for those folks that may not stay tuned, you probably all will, but our next scheduled meeting will be April 17th at six o'clock, so we will go into closed session at this time. Thanks all very much.